Good afternoon, everyone. We're convening the Senate Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts on our 3:00 PM agenda here in State Capitol, Conference Room 224. We have a number of measures on the agenda this afternoon, so we'd ask everyone to make sure your written testimony is submitted to the committee. And for those who are wishing to speak, I will ask you to limit your comments to a minute. Make sure we have time to get through everybody who wants to speak. That said, up first is Senate, or excuse me, House Bill 2112 relating to moped insurance, which requires that moped operators carry an insurance policy. And testifying first is Hawaiian Style, oh, excuse me, is a Moped Doctors, Inc. If not, we have Corbin Gerard. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, members of the Senate, for hearing me out. I just want to say my testimony is written and you have it provided. If you have any questions about any of the information or what I wrote, feel free to ask me.
Thank you very much.
Did he say if he's opposing or supporting?
He is in opposition.
Okay. Thank you.
Testifying next.
Good doctors.
Oh, there you are. Please go ahead.
Hi, I had a little difficulty with the audio. How are you doing, Senator Lee, Senator Inouye, and all members of the Transportation, Culture, and Arts Committee? I'm Robert Sato, also Ms. Manabu Sato. We at Moped Doctors strongly oppose this bill because I don't know if you've seen the previous testimonials given on the House hearings that they had on the 8th and the 18th of February, but everybody, except for the Transportation Committee, the DOT's own testimony, except for the DOT's own testimony, every other testimony coming from the public or private individual or business is 100% unanimously opposed to this bill for a variety of reasons. I also did a little bit of research. Apparently, the Hawaii Insurance Commissioner can't guarantee it'll be easy to get this insurance or this type of insurance, or how affordable it will be, or how easy it'll be to access. He has major doubts about that. Apparently, that's in one of the video testimonies of the earlier House Bill testimonies given. And then, basically, if you look at the DOT stats.
If you could summarize your comments.
There is a, I'm sorry, what's that?
Your time is up. If you could just summarize real quick and wrap that up.
Basically, we believe that more mandatory insurance would just cause more hardships for the cash-strapped people Hawaii. Thirty percent of the people who are involved in accidents are shown to be on Quest or Medicaid or another subsidized type of government insurance, which means that a huge minority are just barely making it as it is at this point. And plus, it would really hurt our business, too, respect. And just wanted to make that clear.
All right. Thank you very much.
Rest of my written testimony is there, and you can see that.
All right. Up next, we have Mike Rosman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm in opposition. So, yeah, like, he mentioned that local community is already strapped for cash, and it's kind of hard for them to get insurance. Plus, it's not so easy to get an insurance locally issued by insurance companies. So, again, this bill came through from the House. We're still here, but everybody's in opposition, and this bill passed. I'm not sure how that works, but that shouldn't be the case, I think. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. That's everyone we had signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Mark McCoy. I'm just an old moped salesman. And addressing these issues on my one-minute timer, I thought it was two minutes, but the first issue is there were careful crafters of HRS 286-2 that set forth stipulations that defined what a moped is: less than 2 horsepower, less than 50 cc, less than 30 miles an hour. Those guidelines were set forth by lawmakers that have been signed into law so that mopeds wouldn't require insurance. By requiring insurance, you are going to hit the lowest-income, hardest-working sectors of this society. I sell mopeds to students, dishwashers, busboys, everyone in our service industry. They ride mopeds. And they ride mopeds because they can't afford a car. They can't afford car insurance. We defined what a moped is in law so that it wouldn't require insurance. Requiring insurance on something that didn't require insurance to begin with, our laws are going to be contradicting to begin with.
Second. If you could summarize.
I'll summarize. Representative Sayama said it best in the House hearing that occurred before this a couple of weeks ago. There is much opposition to this bill and no support, and we're still passing it. I invite you to look at those minutes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone else on this bill? All right. If not, are there any questions? I guess for... I guess Mr. Rosman, here in the room, if you'd like to join us. Since you're here before, we have a good relationship.
Yes, absolutely.
Real quick. So, right now, if you own a moped, you're not required to have insurance.
Correct.
If you get an accident, how does that typically play out?
So, what happens is the insurance required is a liability insurance, right? Like motorcycle's insurance, they're a liability insurance. So, you have an option to buy or not health insurance. So, typically, the damage, so the damage to a car is kind of minimum because of the type of vehicle that the moped is. And the insurance, of course, of the car should take care of its own repair. But most of these people cannot afford health insurance. They're not going to buy the optional health insurance. So, we're still in the same problem. If they get hurt, they have to go to the hospital, somebody has to pay for it, right? Their insurance is not, I mean, they're not going to buy the optional, for sure. They barely can, might not be able to pay the minimum liability. So, I understand what we're trying to fix, trying to fix the issue of some of it. Part of the issue is that who pays for it every time there is an accident?
Sure.
And you cannot force, you cannot force, of course, of people to have health insurance because that's beyond prohibitive. It's very expensive. So, the liability is not going to take care of them. So, that's why it's kind of really, it's putting a burden on them without solving the issue because most of the damage occurs to the driver of the moped, right? So, that's the...
Ultimately, taxpayers pick up the bill.
If, yeah, if they don't have a health insurance, taxpayers will pick up the bill. So, but I don't believe we have to, I mean, force insurance on them. I mean, they won't be able to pay for it. The people will drive without insurance.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the next measure, HB 1932, relating to the Department of Transportation, which authorizes DOT to acquire an exchange property. Testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the Department of Transportation. We're standing in support.
Thank you. Also have Signature Aviation. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you. I'm Sabrina Taylor. I'm Vice President of Airport Relations at Signature Aviation. I stand on my written testimony and just wanted to be here today to provide a few brief comments. I wanted to share that Signature is the world's largest private aviation terminal operator, and we operate at six of your state of Hawaii airports. We handle private jet operations, and we provide fuel services to airlines, among many other services. We're currently working with the HDOT on a master plan for our premises at your airports, and we're ready to make a very substantial investment in the range of $40-plus million in our facilities at the Hawaii airports. Therefore, we're in favor of this bill, and we appreciate your consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on HB 1932? If not, other questions? If not, let's move on to the next measure, House Bill 1934, relating to driving while intoxicated, which requires DOT to convene a working group on reducing intoxicated driving. And testifying first is the Department of Transportation. Thank you. Also have MadHawaii. They online?
Not present on Zoom chair.
Okay. Thank you. That's everyone who had signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? Okay. Come forward, and then followed by back.
Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Neighborhood Security WAC from the Kalihii Kapalama District. So, the purpose of this act is to propose an intoxicated driving reduction working group under the leadership of Hawaii Strategic Highway Safety Plan. One of the goals is to identify best practices and methods and strategies to sustain and effective enforcement of state laws while prohibiting operations of cars while driving under the influence. So, you know, why is this important? If we look at the DOT Federal Highway Administration Safety Assessment, Section 1, it's basically like a guidebook. It identifies the root of the problem of unsafe driver behaviors or unsafe traffic characteristics. So, drivers are intoxicated, distracted, or aggressive, and drivers are distracted by their phones, passengers, and other activity, and are driving under the influence. And also amongst the concerns are drivers do not yield to passengers, which endangers pedestrians and bicyclists, and also drivers don't yield to school buses or do unsafe passing.
Summarize, please.
Yeah. So, we should care about safe driving methods and accept this proposal about the working group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Karen Chung. I'm the founder of Ward Village Moms. I'm testifying in support of this bill. I hold in my hand right now a mouthpiece of a breathalyzer. I did not understand what intoxicated driving, so I signed up for a wet lap at the HPD this past Tuesday. Basically, I sat there and drank and keep measuring my BAC. But the point is, I want to make is that I did not know how, I was still very comfortable in driving as a civilian after I had three glasses of wine and two shots of vodka. I did not know where my limit was, but after I took the BAC test, the breathalyzer, and the physical sobriety test, I felt all of them. I was seriously impaired. So, in support of this bill, I would, the essence is that we need to have right information to go out to the public what intoxication is, including the BAC level, what is safe, and that we need to educate the public, you know, what does it mean to be able to be self-aware of your own tolerance and promote safe driving? And one last fact quickly. United States is probably one of the developed countries among the list that is still on 0.08 BAC. The rest of the world, 100 countries, including African countries, are also on 0.0, African countries are 0.08. So, I think we can do better than the developing countries. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? If not, any questions? Okay. If not, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to the next measure, House Bill 1991 relating to motor vehicle insurance, which establishes primary and optional coverage for you drive motor vehicle insurance policies. And testifying first on 1991 is DCCA.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Mary Gordon, you have testified on DCCA.
Thank you. Next is Avis. And/or Budget.
Good afternoon. Laurie Lam on behalf of Avis Budget Car Rental Company, both. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. We are in opposition to this bill. We believe that we should not be placed in the position of having to provide primary insurance coverage as this bill suggests. Historically, this has been the standard of the rental car industry for decades, so we don't believe any change is warranted. Most renters, as you know, have personal automobile insurance, and in those cases where they have no valid and collectible insurance, we will provide coverage up to the state minimum financial responsibility requirements. So, again, the standard's been in place for decades without any issues about claims. We pay our claims appropriately. There's been no indication that the system does not work, and thus, we believe there's no need to change and restructure the entire insurance model of the rental car industry. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Testifying next is Enterprise. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Matt Sujimore on behalf of Enterprise Mobility. I'll echo the same sentiments of the representative from Avis Budget, but also want to point out that, you know, the major concern from Enterprise is the fact that while the outward-facing business model of peer-to-peer rental cars may seem to be very similar, the actual internal structures of how those businesses run are completely different. And those differences, we feel, necessitate the different limits to ensure that both customers, consumers, as well as vehicle owners have the maximum protections, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Testifying next is the Hawaii Association for Justice. Thank you. Turo, Inc. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, other committee members, Navarro Yagi with Turo. Just to sort of summarize our testimony, I think there's two or three points that we just want to emphasize. The first is, again, data, right? We, we don't believe that there's anything in our data, in our claims information, that justifies why we're at four times. And ultimately, what we're calling for is this notion of parity. With that being said, if this committee and legislature believes that four times is too high for rental cars, we also welcome a discussion on finding a compromise insurance minimum standard that is equal for our industries and provides that parity that we ask for. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. That's everyone who signed up to testify in this measure. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on 1991? All right. If not, are there any questions? All right. If not, let's move on to the next measure, House Bill 1539 relating to transportation, which increases fines for violations of certain traffic laws and requires increased motor vehicle insurance minimums. And testifying first on 1539 is the Attorney General. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Co-Chair, and Elphante. My name is David Williams, Deputy AG from the Criminal Justice Division. Basically, this is about the excessive speeding third offense section that proposes to raise the mandatory jail to 90 days that conflicts with HRS 70663 from the HoIe Penal Code because it's designated as a petty misdemeanor offense and penal code limits the jail to 30 days. So, we would, I'm not taking a position, but we just wanted to point that out, and we would recommend keeping the maximum jail at 30 days, creating a new section to designate it as a misdemeanor if the committee desires. Or another possibility is to leave it at a petty misdemeanor, but maybe increase the mandatory jail for that section. And I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Up next on 1539 is DCCA. Insurance Division. Thank you. I realize there's multiple DCCA folks in the room now, so I'll specify. Up next is Office of the Public Defender. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Ben Lawenthal at the Public Defender's Office. The Office of the Public Defender opposes 1539 for the reasons stated in the written testimony and also for the general principle of mandatory fines and imprisonment have, take the discretion away from sentencing judges who are best equipped to evaluate all of the aggravating as well as mitigating circumstances. Also join in the Attorney General's suggestion of keeping it as a petty misdemeanor. There are a lot of collateral consequences that happen when you afford the constitutional right to a jury trial. That leads to a lot, that's going to lead to a lot more cases, probably, probably a lot more cases in, with jury demands, that's going to lead to overwhelming the system as well. So, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Up next is the American Property and Casualty Insurance Association.
Aloha.
Aloha.
And I'm Makapagall on behalf of the American Property Casualty Insurers Association. We're in opposition to the measure, and you have my testimony in front of you. I would just simply add that we're humbly asking you to lead the choice up to the consumers to buy sufficient insurance for their, for their needs rather than mandate higher, a higher minimum that would surely affect those who are struggling to afford the high cost of living in Hawaii already. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay. Testifying next is the Hawaii Association for Justice.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Evan Oi on behalf of the Hawaii Association for Justice. You have a testimony where we stand in strong support of this measure. I did just want to highlight, you know, the last time this was changed was 25 years ago, and that's when we had the $20,000 implemented. So, an increase is direly needed, and in order to keep up with inflation, right now, the $20,000 from 1998 is about $40,000 to $45,000. So, an increase to $50,000 is going to put us back at the same level of consumer protection that we had in 1998. We did a cost analysis on it. You have it in our testimony, and it's Exhibit 1. It does highlight, you know, that the ranges that the premiums would look like if it goes up to 50 and 100 would be about $25 to $75 a year, or about $2, you know, $6 a month. So, you know, for an additional $30,000, we feel like the benefits outweigh that cost. So, you're happy to answer any questions that you have, and we'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Hawaii Insurance Council. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inouye, members of the committee, Mike Winifredetti offering comments on HB 1539. Instead of focusing on how long it's been since Hawaii changed its limits, let's look what's happening around the country. And it's in our testimony, 43 states have 2550 or lower. Only two states have 5100. No state has higher. In addition, we offer some information about the Milliman Study referenced in the HAJ's testimony. They've mischaracterized what the results were. The result of that actual study were that economic issues drive uninsured populations like education, like unemployment, like every other economic factor in the world. If it costs more, people buy less of it. And then the final thing we'll add in addition to our testimony, we've submitted on these issues previously. Hawaii has a welfare program, CPAI, Certified Public Assistance Insurance. We offer free liability insurance for people under certain welfare programs. As much as the limits go up for paying customers, they will have to go up for the welfare recipients. Those losses are paid by assessments to insurance companies. Those assessments are factored into our premiums. So, premiums will go up for everybody just because of that welfare program as well. Available to answer any questions, and thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Niwa Roberts, Niwa and Roberts CPAs.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes. Please go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify on HB 1539, HB 1. I am testifying as an accident victim. I believe the current auto insurance provisions and limits are grossly outdated after 20, not being revised after 25 years, and having to go through the experience of navigating the insurance, trying to get insurance reimbursements for my injuries. One, one provision I would like to have revised is Section 431, 106-103.5 with respect to personal injury protection coverage, PIP. And I'd like to recommend that be changed from $10,000 to $25,000 with recommended optional increases up to $75,000. And the reason is a driver of the automobile is the one who pays, not the other driver. And so, if a person wants to increase their coverage with PIP, then they can do so at their option. And it, to get reimbursed this way, it does not involve payments from HMSA or medical insurance, and as far as I'm aware, no personal injury attorneys are needed to claim the benefits for PIP coverage. So, if you're an accident victim, you'd want this PIP to go on and to continue until your injuries are covered. Also, when...
If you could just summarize.
Oh, okay. Also, with respect to my written testimony, if you can look at my written testimony, I believe that for a neighbor and a person where there's no specialist doctors, that we should have increased limits because what you have now is totally inadequate. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is State Farm.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Matt Sujimore on behalf of State Farm. We stand in strong opposition to this bill. We think our concern really is that those, the adverse impact it'll have on those people that really can't afford to purchase any other insurance aside from the current minimums. A lot of the people that purchase those minimums purchase such because that is all that they can afford. And really, the concern is that, should they be priced out of insurance, whether they would continue to drive uninsured, which would exacerbate the issues that we're really trying to face and discuss. And, you know, the concern and the sentiment really is that the current insurance structure and the ways that the minimums are constructed allows for maximum affordability as well as maximum choice availability for consumers. So, with that being said, you have our written testimony. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Turo. Thank you. Jay Engoff.
Thank you.
What's your name? My apologies.
That's fine. I'm a lawyer in Washington. I was asked by the Hawaii Association for Justice to determine how much, if any, rates would go up if limits were increased to the extent that they would increase under the bill. I looked at the insurance, I'm a former insurance commissioner of Missouri, deputy commissioner of New Jersey. I looked at the rate filings at the department. In those filings, the companies tell you how much they would charge for 50, 100, 20 coverage. Takes a while to find it, but when you find it, it looks like the rates would go up by less than $6 a month, and in some cases, for example, in State Farm's cases, about $2 a month. The companies can afford this, can afford actually not to raise their rates at all and still offer higher limits because insurance companies in Hawaii today are three times as profitable as companies nationally. So, they can afford to charge the same amount for higher limits. Thank you. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. That's everyone who had signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to testify this afternoon? If not, are there any questions? Senator Elphante?
Yeah, I have two questions for two different parties. I'll first like to call Mr. Oi. Great afternoon. Yeah, thank you for coming up. And, you know, I read through your testimony and your comparison, and so just to reiterate, in your analysis, coverage could go up anywhere between $24 to about 75, is that what you said?
Yes.
Annually?
Yes, that would be annually. And so, when you break it down over the course of a monthly period, it comes out to about maybe $2.5 to $5.5, $6 per month.
Okay. And I know you mentioned that we haven't raised that minimum threshold in years, and which is kind of why I would speculate that what you're proposing is up to $50,000 to cover that. Why not go in sort of a tiered approach? Why not go in sort of a tiered approach to get to that level?
So right now, the bill does have tiers within it. Of course, the amounts are blanked out. We feel as though $50,000 would offer, again, just offer us the same level of consumer protection based on inflation that we had in 1998. I think we'd be, we'd be open to it, but, you know, $50,000 is, we feel from our position, the appropriate amount to address, you know, from a consumer protection standpoint for drivers and residents and pedestrians alike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Question for Mr. Suji-Moore. Hi, thanks for coming back. The previous testifier mentioned about him being a former insurance commissioner that insurance companies can already absorb those costs if there's an increase in rates. Is that possible, you know, to deflate the increase in rates if we're to put an increase in minimums?
You know, I think, to answer that question, I would, for one thing, defer to either our insurance commissioner or Michael Onofrietti, who actually has some substantive experience in this. But to answer your question, Senator, I think that, you know, what the previous testifier mentioned with regards to multiple different rate filings for different plans and premiums is correct. Every insurer does so, which is why my assumption would be that for a lot of us in this room, we probably have different insurance. We're on different plans depending upon our provider. So there are different plans that people subscribe to and pay for, which are currently on the books. But I think that when we start adjusting the minimum, the minimums, everything else starts to adjust with it. So for example, in our current plans, under the current plans, the UM, UIM, the uninsured, underinsured motorist coverage would have to shift. So that would increase as well. All these, and then all the other different bits and pieces when it comes to, you know, basically kind of all the quote unquote "add-ons" for your policies, start to have to reflect a higher minimum rate as well. So while it's true that right now there are plans that may reflect a 50/100 coverage scheme, those are based on current minimums with regards to current coverage requirements. And so, again, when you start kind of adjusting those baseline things, everything else above it has to reflect that change as well. So, I mean, I would say, again, it will result in an increase. What that increase is, I wouldn't be able to tell you, you know, for, for the companies themselves.
And one follow-up, Chair, one final one. Thank you for your answer on that. So it sounds like you would be opposed to any increase. What if there were like a minimum tiered increase that perhaps maybe it doesn't go to 50, maybe goes to 30, you know, out in 2026, or 40 to kind of get to what the previous person mentioned about that? Was that something that, for State Farm, that you would be opposed to or open to per se?
Yeah, so I think from State Farm's perspective, I mean, right now, the only state that even has a tiered approach is California. And so their increase, and I might get these numbers a little mixed up, but I believe their current increase, so they just went up to 2550, and their increase to 50100 is out like 10 years from now. And the reason for that is because the insurance commissioner and the insurance division of California wanted to pump it out so that you could, they could evaluate the economic impact upon the people. And, you know, I think from our perspective that we would echo that same sentiment, but honestly, at that point, if you're going to bump it out 10 years, there might as well just not be a mandatory increase. You might as well just, if, if an increase seems like it would be feasible, we can revisit that in 10 years rather than legislate that. And to go back to your first question, you know, I think the, the main concern from State Farm's perspective is that what the legislature decides when it comes to a policy decision of what needs to be the mandatory minimum insurance requirements, we will always respect and honor what it is that the legislature decides. We just want to be sure to communicate to everyone who has to vote on that, that agreeing to an increase in the minimums will result in an increase to consumers, to constituents, to the people, to the residents of Hawaii. And, you know, given the increasing cost of living for all of us, you know, we just feel like that's not a pertinent decision to make at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Suji-Moore. Thank you, Chair.
Further questions? Just real quick for Ms. Niwa, who testified on Zoom, if you're still there.
Hi.
Thanks. You seem to be the only one who has like actual personal experience directly.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, and I don't mean to laugh at that or anything, but that's, that's helpful. In your experience, so I know the time was short to testify, but you had basically said as a consumer--
Yes.
--on the receiving end of these policies, you had run into a problem. Could you finish what you were going to say before you ran out of time?
Yeah, so I wanted the PIP increase, you know, or at least an option for the person who's purchasing, which is, you know, would have been me, to purchase more of the PIP, knowing what I know now that whoever buys a PIP doesn't have to go through HMSA, doesn't have to go through their PI attorney in order to get medical treatment. And we don't have issues with physical therapists saying, "Well, I'm going to stop treating you because I don't want to fill out the paperwork for HMSA." So I've heard a lot of that, and I think that if I had the opportunity, I would love the PIP to be increased more than $10,000 because people don't know that this is to cover your gross medical costs. And if not, you know, have it optional for the driver. You know, for myself, for example, I would certainly get the, the extra PIP knowing what I do now. And so, you know, looking at all these insurance, it's misleading, I think, because if you think you have like $50,000 worth of insurance, first of all, you'd have attorneys, if that was the only recourse of you for your injuries, you wouldn't get the attorneys accepting the engagement because they would think it's not worth their time. Secondly, you have to subtract the attorney's fees, which is going to run about 35% to 45%, and then you have to reimburse HMSA for whatever costs they have if they advance, if they advance medical costs. So the amount that the actual victim gets is very much less than what you think. It's not a whole bunch of money. I mean, with the cost of medical care now, with the CT scans, MRIs, ambulance costs, and all these, it's just tremendous. This is just totally inadequate. And, you know, being a CPA, I can see the numbers, and it doesn't make sense to me, and I feel very strongly that the insurance limits have to be increased, given the fact that the victim will not be whole after the accident. So I know you're considering the cost for the, for people who are driving on the roads, but there's so many people who are uninsured, and there's so many people who have too little insurance, $20,000 or whatever. It will never, never compensate the victim of an accident. And so I think that has to be increased.
Thank you very much. And then could I just follow up with Mr. Engoff, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly? Are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Hey, just on the national perspective, since you seem to be coming in from outside, I forget who else had testified on sort of where Hawaii falls within the spectrum of all the other states when it comes to minimum insurance, but is that a reflection of sort of the base minimum for liability or for some aspect, or is that just sort of like the total amount of coverage?
That there, as I understand it, Hawaii requires only, people have 20, 40, 10 liability. That's it. That it doesn't require PIP, doesn't require uninsured or underinsured. And when you take all that into consideration, Hawaii requires less coverage, requires insurers to provide less coverage than any other state with the exception of New Hampshire, which doesn't require insure, doesn't require people to have insurance at all. It's, and what, what made a particular impression on me, Mr. Chairman, because I didn't know this in the past, is that Hawaii, the profitability of the Hawaii auto insurance industry is almost three times the national average. Year in, year out, Hawaii auto insurers are far more profitable than the national average, and they are the most profitable state in the country. Hawaii is the most profitable state in the country for auto insurers. So auto insurers can easily afford to, to absorb the few dollars a month extra that it would cost to raise the limits, and they would still be making more than a reasonable profit.
Thank you. And then let me follow up with Mr. Onofrietti, if you, if you might. Both on that question, because I can't remember if it was you, forgive me, who testified to that point?
So Hawaii minimum limits are $20,000 per person, $40,000 per accident for bodily injury, $10,000 for property damage liability, $10,000 for personal injury protection. It's mandatory. Un- and underinsured motorist coverages are required unless rejected in writing. And there's these offer forms that are horrible, that our customers have to kind of read through and sign to make a choice and accept or reject those coverages. So I know that's the mandatory coverage package. And then additionally, if you want to protect your own car because you have a loan on it or it's a newer vehicle, then you would buy comprehensive and collision coverage to protect your own vehicle.
And where in the spectrum of all the states, as I've heard everybody else talking?
Right. So 34 states are 2550, so slightly higher than Hawaii, but most of those states do not have personal injury protection coverage as being mandatory. There are three other states that have the same limit as Hawaii, 2040. And do I have a list here? I do. Iowa, Massachusetts, and Michigan also have 2040 limits. Some states are lower, as Mr. Engoff pointed out. There are actually five states that are below Hawaii right now. And Florida and New Jersey have some odd mandates that are kind of hard to figure out. Some states have a basic coverage that you can buy that's really, really low because they're recognizing that low-income people have a difficult time affording insurance. So across the spectrum of the company, the most prevalent limit is 2550. 34 states have that.
Sure. And to the point about profitability, where does Hawaii typically rank amongst other states from your perspective?
If you're looking at the NAIC study cited by Mr. Engoff, Hawaii ranks fairly high. The last two years in that study are 2020 and 2021, which are significantly impacted by the pandemic. Insurers offered discounts. In retrospect, they were not significant enough because in 2020, excuse me, accidents basically rolled off the table. Nobody was driving during the pandemic. Hawaii had a more delayed recovery, so profitability was very high in those two years. Is the average higher over those 15 or 10 years, whatever was cited? It may in fact be. I know that my own company, we don't have that profit margin. That's all I can say.
All right, it sounds like, oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, finish your--
No, I was gonna say, it sounds like if there's an opportunity later on, we'd love to follow up and get data from everybody. I know some of it's in testimony, but I'm sure both Mr. Engoff and yourself and others will be reaching out to.
One other really quick thing is any increase that's cited is per car. It's not, if you have more than one car in your house, multiply that amount by that number of cars. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, thank you. You're talking a lot today.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Onofrietti, I believe in your testimony, you recommended striking out the section for the automatic increase after 2027?
Correct.
And then moving up the date to 2025 rather than 2026? Okay.
Insurance companies will need time to put in their systems, if needed, make filings with the regulator, that sort of thing.
Okay. Do you, I don't know if this was contained in your testimony, but if we were to increase it, do you have a suggested amount for the minimums?
So HIC has offered comments historically on this measure because it's kind of your folks--
Sure.
--job to figure it out. 34 states are 2550. And some have been at that limit for decades. I, you know, that seems to be something a lot of people are okay with. That would be my thought on it.
Thank you.
And we're at 2040 now.
Correct, plus $10,000 PIP.
For the questions? All right, if not, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 1577 relating to motor vehicle towing fees, which authorizes tow operators to charge an additional amount for overturned vehicles. Testifying first is DCCA. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Oi, Senator Elafante, Mona Moriarty on behalf of Office of Consumer Protection. We offered comments on this measure. This particular measure does not contain the important consumer protection measures that the Senate measure that crossed over earlier has. So I'm speaking of important measures regarding clamshell devices, immobilizer devices, including a cap on the amounts that can be charged, as well as cash credit or debit. And cash credit or debit is, I'm using shorthand, what I mean is that the law requires tow companies to accept cash credit and debit. And it is a frequent complaint at our office that tow companies demand cash payment. Therefore, we're, we've offered, and the Senate version did incorporate some amendments, making it even more clear that cash credit and debit are required to be accepted. So we prefer the Senate, the Senate version, and we respectfully request if this bill moves on, that it be amended to include those important consumer protection provisions.
Thank you very much. Next is Agasiba and Sons Towing. And physician? And that's everyone who signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? Oh, please come forward. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Paul Perry, Paul Iven on motor point. With regard to Mr. Agasiba's statement, he actually made a mistake. He's not an opposition, he's for it. Anyway, I'm here to, for the bill also. Presently, we're trying to get some kind of reasonable fees to upright overturned vehicles that are on the roadways. Those are circumstances that cause perfect traffic jams and cause injuries to operators. So I'm here to field any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? If not, are there any questions? Mr. Moriarty, if you would, briefly. Just to your point you raised about the consumer protection measures around cash credit and so forth, if we would apply those to this measure as well, but across the industry broadly, as well as the clamshell situation, is there anything else in there that I guess you'd recommend? Because currently, obviously, that's not in the law, the clamshell and other immobilizer devices are not covered by that. Is that the full spectrum of everything?
I'd have to double-check our, the latest version of the Senate measure on this. I think that it, that does cover it, though. We addressed clamshell devices and putting a cap on the amount recovered for clamshell devices, as well as requiring parking management and towing companies who use clamshell devices to accept cash credit and debit. And we, again, the other amendment was to clarify that, again, cash credit and debit are all required to be accepted by all towing companies. If I've missed anything, I apologize, and I'll let you know after.
We can follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure. HB 2376 relating to funding adjustments for state programs, which adjusts funding for DOT programs to pay for anticipated operating shortfalls due to limited ability to transfer funds between programs. Testifying first is DOT. Thank you. Department of Budget and Finance?
Please send it to the board.
Thank you. That's everyone who submitted testimonies. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? One's going twice? If not, all right, any questions? If not, all right, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure. HB 2380, making an emergency appropriation to the Department of Budget and Finance, which provides special funds for dispersments of monies in a mass transit special fund. Testifying first is the Department of Budget and Finance.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee, Sabrina Nasser, Deputy Director for Department of Budget and Finance. And we're in strong support of this bill. This is an EA to adjust the special fund ceiling increase. So it's special funds only, and it's to accommodate additional revenues so that those can be dispersed to the county. Available for any questions.
Thank you. Up next is-- Next is Honolulu Authority, Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. I almost thought it was Rapid Transit. Okay. Learn something new every day.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members. For the record, Lori Kahikina, Executive Director and CEO of Heart. I just want to thank you very much for hearing this measure. We stand by our written testimony that was approved by the Heart Board, and we're in strong support. And I'm available for any questions, should you have any.
Thank you. That's everyone who signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure this afternoon? Good afternoon.
Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Kapalama Neighborhood Security Watch. So the purpose of this act is to provide an emergency appropriations of special funds to allow the Department of Budget and Finance to disperse funds for the mass transit special fund. And this request is so funds can be distributed sooner. So, you know, you got the down payment, but you want to get all of it now, right? So, you know, why should we support Heart's operations? Heart is a semi-autonomous public transit authority responsible for the planning, development, and construction of a train extending for 20 miles along the automated fixed guideway of the Heart system with 21 stations going from Kapole past downtown and into the heart of the town. So the purpose of this project is to provide high capacity rapid transit from Kapole to the University of Hawaii Amanoa to provide faster, more reliable public transportation and mobility to people of limited income, the marginalized, the disabled, and to serve the developing corridor. And supporting facilities of the project include a vehicle maintenance and storage facility and the ROC, the Rail Operations Center, and an access ramp from the H2 to the Pearl Highlands parking structure. So because the Heart supports our community, we should support this special fund. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? If not, are there any questions? Just one for BNF. Thanks. Just to clarify, because this is one of those that I imagine can be interpreted in a number of different ways by folks watching. The reason for this measure, as I read through your testimony, is that there was more money that ended up in the special fund than the expenditure ceiling would allow to be traditionally dispersed.
Exactly. So there's just more revenue that's been just sitting in this fund. And it's, we're just adjusting the appropriation ceiling. So this isn't an increase. There isn't, you know, any increase in budget. It's just increasing the ceilings so that those can be dispersed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further questions. Let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 2380, oh, excuse me, wait, no, we're just on that one. HB 2490 relating to capital advancement contracts, which increases the caps for the total contract value for a capital advancement contract in the aggregate of those for harbor improvements. Testifying first is DOT. Thank you. Next is Young Brothers. If not, that's everyone who signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on 2490? If not, are there questions? Just real quick for DOT on this. I don't know if the deputy is online as well.
Deputy Director, can you respond for us?
Yes.
Yeah. Let me make the questions infinitely harder now that I realize you're here. No, no, just curious. Raising the threshold, basically, the short of it is it would allow you more flexibility to move things along quicker. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And is there any, I guess, is it a particular set of projects or anything that's currently in the pipeline you're looking at?
Sure. So two large projects that we are looking at working with harbor users and developing is the redevelopment of Piers 39 and 40, where Young Brothers currently operates. And then the San Island Container Terminal where Matson and Asia currently operate. So the redevelopment projects that we are planning for are hundreds of millions of dollars. But where we would like to apply some of these capital advancement contracts is for some of the design work. So because we're currently capped at $2 million, and this is work that we traditionally would perform ourselves, but because the level of coordination that's required with the harbor users, this is something that we could give them the funding for. They follow the procurement requirements that the state requires. And they would work with a contractor to, for example, prepare the design documents for these significant redevelopment projects. So right now, because we're limited at $2 million, we've got to phase the design planning process that they are working with a contractor on. If we had a higher threshold, like a $5 million, we wouldn't have to phase each the design, and it could be done comprehensively. That's just one example of how we might apply the CACs if these ceilings are increased.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Yes. With that said, you highlighted some of the peers. But you're not limited to only those areas that you would probably need the additional resources.
That's correct. So those are just your examples.
Because we're still doing, and we need to continue on with the Hilo Harbor as well.
That's correct. So we could absolutely apply a CAC to Hilo Harbor.
So for all of the peers and all projects?
Yes.
Statewide. Okay. Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 2526 relating to motor vehicles, which increases the penalty for a third or subsequent offense involving the unauthorized driving or operation of motor vehicles to a Class C felony, and authorizes the courts as part of sentencing for the third or subsequent offense to order the vehicle used by the person in the commission of the offense to be subject to forfeiture. And testifying first on 2526 is Office of the Public Defender. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. The Office of the Public Defender respectfully opposes this bill for the reasons stated in the written testimony. I recognize, and the office recognizes, that there is a great clamor and that there is a rightful indignation as to what's been happening on our streets throughout the state. We recognize that. However, this bill criminalizes conduct that is disclosed, that occurs all the time, that happens in, is prosecuted in our district courts and in our traffic courts. Just to summarize, it's, the offices believe, yes, indeed, speed on the road can injure and kill, so can negligence. But the conduct that is being elevated to a Class C felony is driving. That's it. It's not an enhancement to something like negligent homicide, for example. It is not a fact that would be imposed as a mandatory minimum. So for example, if someone did not have a license when they engaged in negligent conduct, it's nothing like that. It is the mere act of driving. And so for the reasons stated in the opposition, we oppose the increasing to a felony, the mandatory fines, for the reason that it keeps people who are indigent locked in the cycle of debt collection. And finally, the forfeiture provision, we believe, runs afoul with the Eighth Amendment and the decision in Timms v. Indiana. I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney. In support? If not, Kim Koko Iwomoro.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for this opportunity to testify in support of this motion with amendments. We've been meeting with Sarayara's mom about this issue and the solutions. And I believe she met with your office as well, and she really appreciated it being heard and understood. From what I gather, she doesn't feel like this bill, the way it's written, with the elevated the elevated to a Class C felony, and then it's not getting to the heart of the issue, which for her is number one. And this is something, I guess, she's garnered, and as well as Karen, who will testify later, that police often, when they stop somebody and they realize that this person is unlicensed, not just that they left their driver's license in another handbag or, you know, pair of pants, but actually they don't have a driver's license or it was revoked, that when the officer stops them, they have the discretion to let them get back in the car and drive off. And it kind of sets the raw, you know, so basically, I think what Sarayara's mom Chevy wants is that she wants to make sure that the officer says, hey, we're on a street, your car's pulled over, it's in a safe spot. You can't get in the car and drive away. You can call the owner of the car. If it's not you, you can call a friend who has the driver's license, drive it away. If it's stopped in the middle of the highway and it's causing a traffic, then call the tow truck. They get to tow it to the safe place. They don't need to impound it. They don't need to impound the car and all that. And then what they can also do is call the registered owner of the car, you know, to say, hey, there's this person driving your car. Did you give them permission or is it stolen? You've got to come pick up your car. And if this person gets busted again, we're going to, we're actually going to impose fines. So there's other things you can do to separate the unlicensed driver from this situation instead of throwing them into jail for a longer period of time, or, you know, there's other ways to do it. And I
Can we ask you to summarize?
I think that's kind of it. I'm open to questions about more possible ways we can fine tune this law to get the effect that the family wants.
Thank you. Up next. Online, I believe. Mr. Sanyatan. Good afternoon.
Hi.
Butchering your name.
No, that's okay. Chevy Lynn Sanyatan. Hi. I am the mother of Sarayara. You know, it's been a year since my daughter has been gone. And so it has been my mission to keep our community safe. And, you know, I'm not asking that you put these people that's driving without a license in jail. But for, you know, we need to have a little bit more penalty and letting them know that they shouldn't be on the street. And if they need help to get a driver's license, then they should seek help, or we should find them help to get a driver's license. You know, because this guy that killed my daughter was an unlicensed driver. And he was pulled over the month before my daughter was killed. He was, he had 12, driving without a license. So my mission now is try to keep these people off the street till they have proper driver's license. And I support this bill with amendment. But we need to consider that our penalty needs to be a lot more stiffer for people that doesn't abide in the law with driving without a license. Because this could have been prevented. And when you think about it, too, driving, a person driving without a license, and if that vehicle, it is their vehicle, they're not covered under insurance. And who pays after they get into a car accident or, like, say, kill someone, like my daughter? If he was uninsured, this, we would have had to pay out of our pocket. The victims have, is the one that suffers in the end. Bad enough that they have to grieve losing a loved one. Now they have to pay the bills that occurred because of this accident. So I'm just asking that you look into this and, you know, thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone who signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure this afternoon? Please come forward.
Hi, Karen again from Work Village Moms. So after the first testimony, we did more research. And actually, basically, we spoke to HPD, and we were at the Police Academy this past week. We understood from the Traffic Division that every night from an eight-hour shift, for every 10 cars that they pull over, about four to six are drivers without license. So this problem is quite serious in Hawaii. And then we asked them, what is the pain point? Basically, the court is not doing prosecuting fast enough to process them. So we are in support of this bill, but with amendments, suggested amendment with clarity that police being the first point, the touch point of these unlicensed drivers that, you know, seemingly could be very dangerous. The police should not let them return to the car and to resume driving. I think this language should be included in the bill. And then, second of all, as a group, we want to encourage the prosecutor to actively process this case. These are also worthwhile cases. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to testify on HB 2526? Thank you. All right. If there's no further testifiers, are there any questions?
Yes, Chair.
Vice Chair.
I've heard several speaking with regards to making an amendment. Do we know who's proposing the amendments, or I don't see any amendments coming forth?
We have submitted amendment suggestion on the first round.
Do you have yours in this current testimony?
Why don't you come forward?
Yeah.
Well, we can utilize our version.
Well, we, actually, if you could take it, I mean, yes, Doc, we can hear what we've all said. And make the amendments to remove some of the things that we said we weren't supporting and to put in those causes that we do support. Like, the police officer shall not let the unlicensed driver get back in the car. I mean, yeah, I think those are key points and, you know, shall prosecute, shall look into. But I don't think, so that would be the shalls. And we just want to make sure it's so clear to every law enforcement officer that's pulling over a driver that they know not that they just drive away. There needs to be other interventions.
Maybe if you guys can follow up.
Thank you.
Further questions? Public Defender?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So you'd raised concerns with a felony, Class C felony. Well, a number of things, but the Class C felony seemed to be the thing you sort of focused on.
Yes.
Is that basically a deal breaker in this case for you? Is there some middle ground there?
I'm not at liberty to speak on behalf of the office as far as a middle ground necessarily. I can only point out the problem that when it does become a felony, it no longer is, it takes us out of the district court and it puts us into circuit court jurisdiction. And so by doing that, even when it becomes a misdemeanor, it gives the defendant the right to demand a jury trial. And so what that does from a systems perspective, if I may, is that it then, by allowing defendants to demand a jury trial, it then becomes something that you would call out a jury for. It slows the process down tremendously. And so that's just to make it a misdemeanor. To make it a felony offense would then slow things down even more. Because typically, and it's only typically, and in my experience, circuit court cases take longer because the stakes are higher. And say, a petty misdemeanor, it's a bench trial, you don't have a jury. It's maximum offense would be 30 days. And those are done without a jury in district court. Those happen with great regularity. And so from a systems perspective, that's a problem. There's also, on the back end, if someone is sentenced to an open five, as we call it, five years indeterminate, that person would then be incarcerated to go in front of the parole board. A lot of resources are spent. And I'm not in a position to say, is this something that is, as a community, we are, we, the legislature, are willing to do that? And I'm just pointing this out, these are the consequences that happen when something becomes a felony. There's also other things like prohibition against all sorts of collateral consequences that come with a felony offense.
Sure. And I think, you know, part of the prior discussions we had on similar bills that were heard earlier in the year, not only in this committee, but certainly in others, is basically weighing the balance between what ultimately is killing people, right? And the kind of behavior, in particular, repeat behaviors that go unchecked, I think, is some of I think, as some of the other testifiers had, had raised. Is there a, a different way or an analogous measure somewhere that you point to that would be helpful in this case?
I, I would say this, and it's, again, I'm, a lot of what I'm saying is based on my experience as a trial attorney and what I've seen as an attorney on Maui primarily, which is, when you criminalize negligence, so, for example, negligent homicide, right? Not intentionally causing death, but negligently causing death, that, the deterrent factor goes down because no one sets out to do something like that. And so, whether it's a deterrent or not is very difficult to measure, as opposed to say, intentional conduct, don't steal, because these penalties are so high. That's the theory behind it. When it comes to driving without a license, I really just would point out the conduct here is not, in itself, the dangerous activity. It's simply the act of driving without the privilege to drive, as opposed to say, an act of negligence that results in damage or death. So, to do something that elevates these offenses, turns it into a felony for an act that is, I, in itself, nonviolent, is a concern, and not inherently dangerous, really. There are other, this is a problem, but we do believe that this bill doesn't really address the root of the problem, I'm afraid.
So, you know, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion this year, in fact, in this legislature, about a number of other types of violations, infractions, crimes, et cetera, for which there's no immediate danger yet. There are felony provisions being put in place because you have a repeat situation where someone has continued to violate at what would be a, a lower level, which is increasing the risk, certainly, and among other things, for the kinds of terrible or tragic outcomes that are out there. One of the things, and it's a little unfortunate, both the prosecutors and HPD are not here because they've weighed in on other bills along the way, which is, and there are some logistical limitations that have been put in place, you know, storage of cars and things like that, which have sort of narrowed the number of, like, realistically actionable options in some of these bills. Are you able, in the next few days, to kind of sit down with some of those other stakeholders and figure out if there are solutions to that logistical situation that, for you, would allow some of the other things that you're speaking to to move ahead?
Yes, we are definitely willing to participate. We welcome the invitation to be at the table and discuss.
I think realistically, it's hard to have a full conversation about this without those folks there, because they're the ones doing the enforcement.
Understood.
And they're the ones that have raised a number of concerns about actually, you know, when you pull someone over, what actually happens? Does the officer, or anything to the, some of the other testifiers' points? In our prior discussion, we'd noted, you know, you could stop someone who's driving without a license. Often, it would be someone who was just going to the beach and forgot their stuff at their house or whatever. It's nothing malicious about it. So you'd have to account for that. And then, secondly, for the officer, if you're asking someone to, one of the big pushbacks was if they're having someone on the side of the road, either, you know, semi-detained or at least required to leave their car or whatever, someone's got to be there to babysit, so to speak. For libel and all those other reasons. So, I'd like to figure out if there's some way to circumvent that or get around it or resolve it. But ultimately, I think there's not going to be a perfect solution here that's going to make everybody happy no matter what, because there are going to be enhanced penalties, I think, that the community is demanding, which probably will not square with, I think, some of the testimony you've offered. But also, there are probably some, you know, clear justification for moving the bill at the same time.
Sure.
And, and doing these things. So anyway, I'd like to have HPD and prosecutors and others a part of that discussion, if you're open to that.
I will definitely take this back to the office, but I would think we would be open. And so, I will, I'll just have to leave it at that. I can't speak officially on it, but I can bring it back. And I certainly hope that we're able to participate. I also will just say, as a trial lawyer on Maui, I will point out that the Maui County Council some years ago passed a measure that empowered police officers to forfeit vehicles upon an arrest for drunk driving. It passed with a lot of public scrutiny. And again, I am only speaking from my experience at the public defender's office then. There were very few instances in which they were able to successfully forfeit a vehicle because of a lot of practical problems of storage, because of a lot of practical problems of what are we going to do with this vehicle now? Not to mention the fact that it invited this excessive forfeiture challenge that I make reference to in the written testimony. So, there, there are some issues with making that point of arrest as to what to do. But yes, I will definitely take this back to the main office and I can reach out to you with availability times and dates.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And then, oh, any further questions? Just one follow-up. Forgive me. Thank you, Karen. If you might, you had raised an interesting point. If you'd come forward, please. You'd mentioned it here, but also in your testimony on the prior measure, or a similar measure that we had heard some weeks ago, about on the first or second offense, making sure someone doesn't get back in the car and drive on. Logistically, that's one of those things that HPD and others have raised significant logistical concerns about.
Correct.
Because of what it means. Are there other ways to resolve that?
I don't see that logistic as a very issue. Besides the point that you have to babysit until, let's say, tow company to come to pick up or someone licensed to drive it away. Because in terms of storage, it's, we're not asking them to put it, all the cars at the HPD headquarters. There's 48 active towing companies on the island of Oahu. So I'm sure all the DUI towing is probably, you know, unless it's, you need it for evidence, you will take it to the headquarters. But there's all this subcontractor you can, you know, work on. They would love their business. So the, the point is that we're not trying to, you know, over-penalize people. We're trying to simply put, prevent death. And, and the first touch point rests with the police. And when I spoke with the traffic division, they, they said that, you know, a lot of times that they keep pulling them over, they gel them for two days, they come back out to the system, the court doesn't process them, and it's repeat, repeat, repeat. So if we have a language that is so clear in the bill that says they need to stop them from driving or have the vehicle, you know, tow away to a safe location, it's, then it becomes statutory, then everyone is clear what to do for the HPD? Because now there's a lot of discretion. And, and I don't think, when it comes to someone's daughter, discretion of driving unlicensed, that's just, it doesn't sit well with.
Oh, I appreciate that. I think, you know, all of us want to stop the kinds of tragedies that have been occurring, not only in this case, but around all of our islands and districts. We've passed things in the past that have taken different angles on it and tried to do different things. When it's challenging logistically or legally to Mr. Lonthal's points in the courts and how that actually plays out, it doesn't always solve the problem, which is why it'd be great if we can get, as much as we can, recognizing that, at least in the short term, there are challenges that we can't immediately overcome with respect to HPD and others that have either resource issues or time and other things. Clearly, I think in the long run, we'll have to work with the counties on all of that.
Yep.
But for the moment, I mean, what we can do right now, you know, this year with these measures, I have to recognize there's a limited window of time. So can we come to some consensus around, around what we're willing to get together on, accepting that nothing's perfect?
Yeah.
And we aren't going to give up on this anytime.
Yeah.
Now or in the future. But, but it's, it's steps along the way.
We're, we're open, though. We're, I'm, I'm working closely with Sarah's mom. We're, we're open. Any progress is better than none. But I, I think it's that we, it's just in my opinion that we elevate this penalty as great as a determinant, but then, it's the touch point rests with the enforcement. That's how we see it. And we just want to close that gap a little bit smaller.
I totally appreciate that. I think, you know, what we'll do is, we'll be reaching out to HPD, of course, and the other folks who have weighed in on the conversation earlier. I don't expect that there's going to be significant change in their position.
Yeah.
Because frankly, there is not a significant change in their resources overnight. But that said, I mean, for, to your point about, and the others, about the repeat offenders who keep doing this regardless, and Mr. Lonthal, I think, Public Defender's brought this up as well. You know, there are things we can do in those situations pretty reasonably that'll be effective. And, you know, while I think, you know, Public Defender's doesn't agree that there's a severe penalty that's being put in place for those who continue to offend, we're not talking about, you know, someone who just, as I had mentioned, you know, left their wallet at home and.
Yeah.
Aren't intentionally trying to, but someone who's on their second or third or not learning their lesson, that there's something serious there. I mean, that's something we can do this year, I think, pretty readily, without jeopardizing the bill potentially, you know, being vetoed because it's unworkable or whatever else.
Yeah.
So, at the very least, for that provision, is that something that's at least going in the right direction here?
Yeah, yeah, I, I fully, we are open to that and we, we want the progress. But I just want to point out that, you know, like, even if we increase all the penalties, I've said in my earlier testimony, like, it wouldn't have, like, you know, this Class C felony. If the same guy came out, Sarah would have been killed. She would still have been killed. It doesn't change much because it, we did not close the gap. So I, I think it's great while we get this rolling, but the, the gap is, the touch point is really at the police, is the right on enforcement right there.
And there's a lot more to it than just that as well, with infrastructure fixes and other things that we're all working on.
Yes.
I think a number of these other bills that we've been hearing the last few weeks here, or a few months here, are touching on as well. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
But you know, I, I agree, though, that something needs to be recognized in statutes with regards to assisting the police departments as to the issue with regards to abandoning the car at that moment.
Yes.
Because you don't know if the driver is a second or third violator because he's never been caught at the first time around.
Correct.
And so, if he, so, I, and I agree, I've heard it many, many times, the police officers, if it's not in statute, they can't do it, and it leaves to a discretion. But as far as I'm concerned, the best thing to do is just impound the car at the first time around.
Yeah, just, just take away the vehicle.
And they always tell us, there's nothing for us to do that because there's no law that allows.
To empower them, yeah. And, and then, and then I, my position, you know, as I start to testify against all those, for these bills, that I, my position earlier was that HPD was not doing enough with enforcement. It, it, it felt like the public sentiments, at least among the mothers in the Kakako.
And you can blame them because it doesn't allow them to do that.
Correct. And then I've learned that from the, this past week, is actually that they are, every day, eight-hour shift each police officer, they keep pulling people over, but they're, they can only do that one part. And then they need to be wise also to know what to pick, you know? But thank you for your opportunity and thank you for really hearing us out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's no further questions? It is 4:25, so we're gonna have to do this real quick. Folks are all right, we'll go. Yeah, hold on, I'm gonna. Yeah, just because we're out of time.
Well, I got, I got us another, like, five minutes.
Yeah, it's okay. I won't rush it.
I have problems if it's on, I let, I need to let you know.
Sure, sure, yeah, we'll, we'll, just one sec.
You know, 1934, DME wanted to be in the working group?
Yeah, okay, so what I'm gonna do is defer everything. Let me come back to the others, we're out of time, except for these two.
What is?
2380 and 2490.
We're pressing that today?
Yeah.
Oh.
So we'll do that, those with amendments. Just the emergency appropriation and then the other budget thing, which we need to start working on.
When are you gonna defer the other last two?
Tuesday.
Okay, wait, 2380 and 2490?
Right.
Okay, oh, with amendments. That's the only two.
Everything else will defer until Tuesday.
But you consider the DMEs on the working group?
Yeah, we can talk about all that stuff. Oh, yeah, we didn't recess. Okay, well, since we're already in. Okay, let's go straight into decision-making on our 3:00 PM agenda. Appreciate everybody's time on the discussions, which were quite in-depth, which was fantastic. But that means we're almost out of time as our time period for this particular hearing expires in two minutes. So what we're gonna do is defer for decision-making all the bills on the agenda until Tuesday at 3:05 PM here in this room, this coming Tuesday, the 19th. With the exceptions of two, the first being House Bill 2380, HD2, making an emergency appropriation to the Department of Budget and Finance. And for this one, the recommendation will be to pass with amendments affecting the effective date for this emergency appropriation. Effective.
Oh, effective.
Yes.
To what?
So any discussion on?
Upon approval, July 1st.
It's gonna be upon approval. All right, if no discussion, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation on HB 2380 to pass with amendments. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Alafanti.
Aye.
Senator Canuha.
Aye.
Senator Owa.
Aye.
Motion is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Up next is HB 2490 relating to capital advancement contracts. Again, the recommendation will be to pass with amendments affecting the effective date. This one will be July 1. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation on HB 2490 to pass with amendments with five members present and voting with reservations. Any no votes? Hearing non-messengers adopted, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. And as I mentioned, everything else on the agenda will be deferred until Tuesday. With that, we're adjourned.